Now being 5:30, I will call the Monday, November 19th. Board of Selectmen meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded for Cablecast and YouTube presentation by Area 58 Community Access Media. The video of this meeting is not to be considered an official public record. The first item on our agenda is to welcome our new Fire Chief Steve Silva. We are excited, pleased. It's been a long journey, but we're just delighted you're here, Steve. I'm looking forward to it.
Same. We have been, it's been kind of a rocky road. We've, I think, things happened for a reason, and I think that, you know, the whole thing was a learning experience, and we've really come together, I think, as a department through some difficulties. And I'm super excited about starting a new chapter in the department under your leadership. So, welcome. Thank you, thank you.
Well, we had some challenges along the way, and sometimes what comes out of that is more challenges, but sometimes what comes out of that is a stronger, better situation. I think we discovered maybe that we didn't fully understand the degree of camaraderie, the degree of pride, particularly in a small town, particularly in a small-town fire department. Along the way, we got to discover the incredible merits of Chief Ben Jamino, who really, really made an amazing difference, and I'm not sure we could have done it otherwise. And then coming out of all that is the opportunity for a really amazing fellow to join us, and we're really appreciative and very excited. You were a hit point.
I'm just so thrilled to have you onboard. I really am. I think that you're the perfect fit for this town and for the department, and I think that we're all so proud of the department as a whole and how far that we've come and all the potential that exists with you at the helm. So, congratulations.
So, where's Tara?
Tara's right in the back.
Tara, you gonna do the swearing-in?
Do you want to do the first?
I'll face the land impartially.
Just charge and perform all the duties. In come to the economy.
In come to the department.
As the Fire Chief.
As the Fire Chief.
On the Fulton Fire Department.
On the Fulton Fire Department.
Employments with the laws.
And co-ices with my laws.
Of the town of Fulton.
Of the town of Fulton.
And the laws of the Commonwealth.
And the laws of the Commonwealth.
So help me God.
It's very exciting. Some pictures?
Some pictures. And I'm standing here, at scenes to my left, people I've worked with for years, and to my right, people I'm looking forward to working with for the next seven years, too. And we are a team, we're a family, it's the brotherhood of the fire service and sisterhood. And together, this is going to be a wonderful department because we have fantastic people. Thank you all very much.
Abe, you want to get some pictures? You got some, but I think we ought to have the families come up.
You've got a captive audience. Okay. So sweet.
Abe, we wanted a made-page spread this weekend. Just to make this legal on our side, too, we have to do the appointment to Stephen Silva, the Board of Selectmen of Plimpton, by virtue of the authority on us vested by the laws of the Commonwealth, does here appoint you as Plimpton Fire Chief until November 19, 2021.
I'll second the motion.
I'll lose him, Abe?
Aye.
Aye.
Enthusiastically.
Well, thank you both.
We were just talking about how we, you know, a while ago felt quite alone, and it wasn't long before you all stepped forward to help us and offered your services, and our department pulled together, and we really felt like we were part of a super, a strong community that were looking out for each other in the town, and it really helped us out of a very dark time. So, thank you all so much for all your efforts to get us where we are today.
We've been doing a lot of learning, so thank you.
And we will continue to learn.
We all will.
I want to see a picture with his wife. Come on, let's go ahead.
Yeah, watch the apartment.
Absolutely, absolutely. Why don't you guys, like, want to come up in here? With a flag in the background?
Yeah, I knew.
Why don't you guys, like, want to come up in here? With a flag in the background?
Yeah. Why don't you guys, like, want to come up in here? With a flag in the background? And then, would you like to do one with your colleagues that are here from the other communities?
Absolutely.
I think that would be nice.
That'd be awesome. Would you like to take a picture?
Absolutely.
Why don't you guys, like, want to come up in here? With a flag in the background?
Talk to people in the back.
Talk to people in the back?
And then, would you like to do one with your colleagues that are here from the other communities?
Absolutely.
I think that would be nice.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, now look at me.
Chief! Not the one, the new chief. Do you want to take a picture with your daughter?
How you doing?
Good, I'm good.
Steve, smile.
You want something?
Pretty much.
Okay, now look at me.
I'm a different category.
Oh, this one.
Thank you for your work.
Did you try to?
Well, you sound all over.
You want me to do it this month?
Just a slice of it.
Here, I don't buy it.
I think you have to kind of scooch.
You're laughing now.
Thank you all. Thank you. Thank you. Yeah. If you could hunt down, you just kind of...
I have a Mexican name.
Is there one more?
Yes, absolutely. Hi, Emily. It's a nice to meet you.
You must have taken two trucks out of the place to put all these people.
Can you get the camera?
I know.
Hopefully, the players are here. Okay, we're going to jump back into the meeting. Sir. A pleasure.
Nice to see you. I'll talk to you soon. Have a happy Thanksgiving.
Yeah, happy Thanksgiving.
The, uh... Next thing we have on our agenda is the animal control. Do we have people coming?
I think we do.
Oh, okay.
Good evening, folks. Come on in.
All right, you should have joined us. Uh, maybe at the table? Griffin? Yeah, that'd be good.
Can I get a copy?
Yeah, it's public record. Yes. That should be public record, not the executive session or anything.
Yes.
And then I have a boss.
You guys have one?
Okay.
I still want...
Muck, you want to lead us? So, welcome back, everybody. So, this is a public hearing, and public hearings have some rules that are a little more formal than our usual goings-on, but this is an adjudicatory hearing, so there's certain things that we're required to do. So, the first thing is notice, and I want to confirm that we gave sufficient notice to the interested parties. As I understand it, on November 6, certified return receipt letters were sent out to the owner of the dog in question, the owner of the dog that were attacked, and the animal control officer.
Correct.
Is that correct? Very good. There was a public hearing notice, which was posted according to open meeting law last week, so we've taken care of all of that. A few ground rules pretty much go without saying, but just so there's no confusion. Any testimony given will be limited to the issues directly related to the subject matter. Only one person is permitted to speak at a time. All discussion will be through the chair. All parties will be expected to conduct themselves civilly. Arguments between parties will not be permitted, and that takes care of that. We do ask anyone that speaks to start with their name and their street address, because some of us are kind of old up here with old ears. We do ask people to speak up, so we can hear what's going on. So, in adjudicatory hearings, there are two phases. The first one's the collection of evidence, and the second one is collection of evidence in defense of the subject. So, we're going to hear first from the animal control officer, and then from the owners of the dog that was attacked. And after that, so we'll hear from each party. At that point, we close the evidence part of the hearing, and then we go ahead and deliberate. So, we have received from the animal control officer a letter reporting his investigation and his recommendations, but maybe you can go ahead and summarize, Forrest Griffin, please.
All right. On October 18, 2018, I, Animal Control Officer Griffin Webb, responded to 125 County Road for a report of a dog bite. When I arrived, the aggressor dog, Mandy, was no longer at the scene. I first spoke with Ms. Carol Quinley, who at the time of the bite was inside of her home. She stated to me that her husband, Mr. Robert Quinley, was outside at the time of the bite. Later on that night, I was able to speak to Mr. Quinley, who stated that both of his dogs were outside in a completely enclosed fence attached to the house. He said that his neighbor's dog, Mandy, a female brindle plot hound, had ran onto his property and jumped the fence enclosing his dogs. Mandy then got into an altercation with Mr. Quinley's dog, Pearl, a beagle, resulting in a bite wound to the side of Pearl's neck. Mr. Quinley stated that after what seemed like forever, the owner of the dog, Mr. Daniel Gazola, had ran over and removed his dog from the property. Mr. Quinley immediately rushed his dog, Pearl, to the vet to receive treatment, and at the time of the incident, both of Mr. Quinley's dogs were up to date on rabies vaccinations and town licenses. Shortly after, I responded to Mr. Daniel Gazola's residence at 129 County Road, who at the time of arrival was not home. With the help of the Plimpton Police Department, I was able to retrieve a phone number for Mr. Gazola to speak to him. I informed him I needed to talk to him, and we had set a time to meet the following morning. The morning of October 19, 2018, I spoke to Mr. Daniel Gazola, who stayed at his side of the incident. Gazola was about to leave for work on the night of the incident when he let Mandy outside to go to the bathroom. He said he had clipped the dog on a runner and went back inside. While he was inside, Mandy had slipped out of her collar, so he was unaware that the dog had left his property. When he went to let the dog back in the house, he realized the dog was not there and immediately ran to his neighbor's house to retrieve the dog. At the time of incident, Mandy was not currently up to date on her rabies vaccine or her town license. I, Animal Inspector Griffin Webb, placed both Pearl Quinley and Mandy Gazola under a 10-day quarantine at their homes in compliance with Massachusetts State Rabies Prevention Protocol. After the 10-day quarantine was completed, I, Animal Control Officer Griffin Webb, then ordered Mr. Gazola's dog, Mandy, to be placed under a 14-day muzzle order to ensure the safety of Mr. and Mrs. Quinley's dog prior to this hearing. My recommendation is that Mr. Gazola's dog, Mandy, be under the direct supervision of its owner at all times while outside its home/shelter. I recommend that if the owner chooses to allow Mandy to be unleashed on the property, then she should be muzzled, or if the owner chooses to leash his dog or place on a runner, then the dog does not have to be muzzled. That concludes my investigation.
So, any questions for the animal control officer at this point?
I've got a question. You said that Mandy was not up to date on her rabies shot. Had she ever received a rabies shot?
Yeah, so I do have, right here, her expired rabies shot. It actually expired on 5/3/2017, so according to my quarantine, well, the quarantine law, that basically states that because the dog was at one point in its life vaccinated for rabies, then it did not have to be euthanized according to the quarantine.
Okay. How old is Mandy?
Mandy, on here, I have, let me see, six, oh, wait, let me grab a new one. All right, she is... Birthdate, 10/23/2014, so she would be six. I mean, four.
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 Okay, close.
Close enough.
Do we know the breed of Mandy?
Says on here she's a plot hound, a coonhound plot.
Yeah, I wasn't familiar with the plot hound.
I just googled. I looked it up. It is a breed, but...
And how big?
She was a medium-sized dog. She was bigger than a smaller dog, but she wasn't a huge dog.
And you've met the dog since?
Yes.
And has the disposition of the dog around you?
Yep. So, I've actually followed up. After the dog was off quarantine, I did go to the house and meet the dog, interacted with the dog, and at that time, the dog showed no aggression towards me. It does live with another dog, but I was not able to test to see if the dog was aggressive towards other dogs.
Okay. Anything else you want to say before we go on to, we'll come back to you along the way?
Yeah, the dog was updated. It did get a current rabies vaccine. It now has a town license after the event, so now the dog is up to date and has a town license.
Are there any others that want to testify about the situation?
Yeah, wait, a second. The other thing. My name is Mr. Quinley. I live at 125 County Road. My dog, Pearl, was the one involved in the incident. I let her out, and both dogs, all of them were excited. Something was in the yard, but I didn't see it at the time. And then Mandy, the dog in question, appeared, and I said, "Okay, I got to try and get my dogs back in," which I tried to do, but before, this is about 20-foot area, by the time I could get them back across, the other dog had already jumped the fence. I turned around and had my smaller dog, which is Pearl, which is barely 19 pounds, on the ground, and they were going head-to-head, and then the dog just lunged onto the throat. Now, it was on the ground there, and I'm saying, "Uh-oh." So, I had a small stick. I tried to jam into him, but this dog is strong, and you could see it's a small, strong dog type of thing. So, I pushed him up against the fence, so he couldn't move and shake the dog and break the neck type of thing. But I'm trying to get him off, and just trying to hit the dog to try and release him. He's locked onto this jaw and onto the neck. I was there about 15 minutes yelling, screaming, trying to get somebody to, my wife was in the house, in the back of the house, in the other room, and she didn't hear me. Eventually, Dan, the neighbor across the street, he heard, he must have, when he came back out, as he was saying, he must have heard me screaming to my top of my lung. He came over, and he was able to grab his dog and pull it off. Once he did that, I opened my gate, told him to get off of it, and I shut the gate, and I took my dog to the vet, who was bitten and bleeding at the time. So, I rushed to the vet up in Hannover, Robert Animal Hospital, and I took there, and the dog was treated. When he came back, I talked to the dog officer. Really what I want is to make sure that that dog is muzzled, so I never have to go out the door. If the dog were muzzled, and it were just a dog-to-dog type of thing, I knew I could push him off, but he wasn't muzzled, and he went right for the throat of the dog. So, I really, you know, the thing's there. I'm 73, and you fire a dog for 50. I was getting to the point that I didn't know, should I try to pull the dog off, or just try to hold him until somebody eventually comes to the scene there? So, but my fine thing, I took him to the vet. We have vet bill, but the kid is a good kid, the neighbor, so I don't, you know, the thing's there. The dog broke loose, and it did, so, but my dog is still alive. The thing's there. Everything's there. I'm just so a parent, afraid I'll go out the door, and that dog will be there again. So, I got to confirm, the dog is only four or five years old. My dog is 12, so I don't want to have to go through this again type of thing. So, that's my thing there, so hopefully we can solve it. Thank you very much.
A few questions. Have there been any, have there been previous episodes?
No. He has two dogs. He has another dog. I don't know what type it is. It's very friendly. I've seen it on the edge of my property, and I look at it, and I taboo, and it runs away. So, it was anything there. So, when this other dog jumped, I didn't even know it was his dog type of thing. All I knew was another dog, and I found out it was his dog at the time. I knew he had a second dog, but I'd never really seen it type of thing.
And how high is the fence?
About 40 inches.
So, Mandy jumped the four-foot fence to go to...
She jumped right over it, because I guess that is a pot-hunting dog, and it can jump and everything, probably things that... No, that fence, that fence could have been five feet, I think. He would have gone over it type of thing, because it wasn't a chain link. It was just a wooden fence type of thing.
So, and you described Mandy with the mouth around your dog's neck?
Yeah.
And that was for 15 minutes, you were...
Right. Mm-hmm. The thing's there. I just jammed him in there, so he couldn't, she would try to move, and I just banged him against the fence again, but I was running out of energy.
And what were the nature of the injuries to your dog?
There was four bites of the, so I do have a picture, but yeah, the other thing's there, but there were four bites. There was two here and two down here. With the vet, they didn't put stitches in, but they kind of just put an interstic or something on it type of thing, so.
So, the veterinary care was having that cleaned up, going on antibiotics?
Right, right. The thing's there. I took, I had to take the dog back. It happened Thursday. I took the dog back on Saturday, and I took her back on Tuesday. Okay? On Saturday, they cleaned it out and dressed her up again. The other two visits were just a quick checkup type of thing. They didn't bill me for that type of thing.
And the initial visit was done on an outpatient basis?
Right, emergency type basis type of thing, so.
Did Mandy show any aggression towards you when you were trying to get her off of...
No, she didn't really, but I didn't get that, to try to grab her head in there. I was just holding her there, hitting with a stick, hoping that she would release her grip, and then I would grab her type of, but she didn't. She just gripped onto it, so the thing's there, so.
Okay.
I didn't get, I didn't get to that point to try and pull it off type of thing.
Okay. Griffin, is Mandy spayed?
I believe so.
Yes.
Okay, so she is altered. All right. Okay.
No, I'm just reading about this breed. Apparently it was bred to hunt bears. I mean, that's, that's a dog. I guess maybe they didn't put in there to discern dog from bear. Yeah, but it must be very aggressive to be able to do that, I would think.
No, they look like they're strong, too.
Madam?
Excuse me, I'm getting to be like him. I'm Carol Quinley, 125 County Road. I just want to say, we have vet bills, and so many people have said to us, "You could go to the homeowner's, his homeowner's, and pay," but we don't want to do that, because we've had trouble with them before and other things, and I don't want to make any more trouble. It's too stressful. Something was in the yard, but I didn't see it at the time. And then Mandy, the dog in question, appeared, and I said, okay, I gotta try and get my dogs back in, which I tried to do, but before, this is about 20-foot area, by the time I could get them back across, the other dog had already jumped the fence. I turned around and had my smaller dog, which is Pearl, which is barely 19 pounds, on the ground, and they were going head-to-head, and then the dog just lunged onto the throat. Now, it was on the ground there, and saying, uh-oh. So, I had a small stick, I tried to jam into him, but this dog is strong and everything. You could see it was a small, strong dog type of thing. So, I pushed him up against the fence, so he couldn't move and shake the dog and break the neck type of thing. But, I'm trying to get him off, and just trying to hit the dog to try and release him. He's locked onto this jaw and onto the neck. I was there about 15 minutes yelling, screaming, trying to get somebody to, my wife was in the house, in the back of the house, in the other room, and she didn't hear me. Eventually, Dan, the neighbor across the street, he heard, he must have, when he came back out, as he was saying, he must have heard me screaming to my top of my lung. He came over, and he was able to grab his dog and pull it off. Well, once he did that, I opened my gate, told him to get off of it, and I shut the gate, and I took my dog to the vet, who was bitten and bleeding at the time. So, I rushed to the vet up in Hannover, Robert Animal Hospital, and I took there, and the dog was treated. When he came back, I talked to the dog officer. Really what I want is to make sure that that dog is muzzled, so I never have to go out the door. If the dog were muzzled, and it were just a dog-to-dog type of thing, I knew I could push them off. But, he wasn't muzzled, and he went right for the throat of the dog, so I really, you know, the things there. At my, I'm 73, and you fire a dog for 50. I was getting to the point that I didn't know, should I try to pull the dog off, or just try to hold him until somebody eventually comes to the scene there, so, but my fine thing. I took him to the vet, we have vet bill, but the kid is a good kid, the neighbor, so I don't, you know, the things there. The dog broke loose, and it did, so, but my dog is still alive, the things there, the things there. I'm just so a parent, afraid I'll go out the door, and that dog will be there again. So, I gotta confront, the dog is only four or five years old. My dog is 12, so I don't want to have to go through this again type of thing, so that's my thing there, so hopefully, we can solve it. Thank you very much.
A few questions. Have there been any, have there been previous episodes?
No. He has two dogs. He has another dog, I don't know what type it is, it's very friendly. I've seen it on the edge of my property, and I look at it, and I taboo, and it runs away, so, so it's anything there. So, when this other dog jumped, I didn't even know it was his dog type of thing, all I knew was another dog, and I found out it was his dog at the time. I knew he had a second dog, but I'd never really seen it type of thing.
And how high is the fence?
About 40 inches.
So, Mandy jumped the four-foot fence to go to...
She jumped right over it, because I guess that is pot hunting dog, and he can jump and everything, probably things that have, no, that fence, that fence could have been five feet, I think he, he were going over it type of thing, because it wasn't a chain link, it was just a wooden fence type of thing, the things there, so.
So, and you described Mandy with the mouth around your dog's neck?
Yeah.
And that was for 15 minutes, you were...
Right, mhm, the things there. I just jammed him in there, so he couldn't, she would try to move, and I just banged him against the fence again, but I was running out of energy.
And what were the nature of the injuries to your dog?
There was four bites on the, so I do have a picture, but yeah, the other things there, but there were four bites, there was two here and two down here. With the vet, they didn't put stitches in, but they kind of just put an insectic or something on it type of thing, so, because they didn't stitch it.
The veterinary care was having that cleaned up, going on antibiotics?
Right, right, the things there. I took, I had to take the dog back. It happened Thursday. I took the dog back on Saturday, and I took her back on Tuesday, okay? On Saturday, they cleaned it out and dressed her up again. The other two visits were just a quick checkup type of thing. They didn't bill me for that type of thing.
And the initial visit was done on an outpatient basis?
Right, in emergency type basis type of thing, so, the things there, so.
Did Mandy show any aggression towards you when you were trying to get her off?
No, she didn't really, but I didn't get that, to try to grab her head in there. I was just holding in there, hitting with a stick, hoping that she would release her grip, and then I would grab her type of, but she didn't, she just gripped onto it, so the things there, so.
Okay.
I didn't get, I didn't get to that point to try and pull it off type of thing.
Okay. Griffin, is Mandy spayed?
I believe so.
Yes.
Okay, so she is altered, all right. Okay.
Okay.
No, I'm just reading about this breed. Apparently, it was bred to hunt bears. I mean, that's, that's a dog.
I guess maybe they didn't put in there to discern dog from bear.
Yeah, but it must be very aggressive to be able to do that, I would think.
No, they look like they're strong, too.
Madam?
Excuse me, I'm getting to be like him. I'm Carol Quinley, 125 County Road. I just want to say, we have vet bills, and so many people have said to us, you could go to the homeowner's, his homeowner, and pay, but we don't want to do that, because we've had trouble with them before and other things, and I don't want to make any more trouble, it's too stressful. We aren't that young anymore, and to deal with all that stress. So, I said to my husband, the heck, we get the stress, we get the vet bills, we'll pay for it. And they haven't even asked anyways.
The thing, but, mhm.
Anyone else want to testify about the situation? All right, anyone want to testify in defense of Mandy? Anyone else want to make any comments of any type, or questions from us? If not, we will then close the evidentiary part of the hearing and go to a discussion. All right, so we'll close the evidentiary part of the hearing, and now we want to go ahead and discuss what our recommendations are. So, if I understand it, I'll start if that's all right with you. Griffin, your suggestion is that we require the Gazolas to keep Mandy under their direct supervision when the dog's outside at all times, that if at any time, Mandy is unleashed, that a muzzle be put on. Is that your recommendation?
Yes, or vice versa, if the dog is on a leash and is on a runner, then it does not need to have a muzzle on.
I don't know why, if it's outside, it wouldn't have a muzzle, but I'm not a dog owner, so you've got to help me with whether that makes sense or not.
Muzzles are hard, because, I mean, there are humane muzzles out there that you can wear, but not all muzzles work the same, so, I mean, for him to, a lot of dogs struggle with the breathing, eating, drinking with a muzzle on. So, my idea in that was kind of that, if the dog's going to be restrained on a leash, and it's going to be under the direct control of the owner, then there should be no reason for the dog to get away. But, if the dog is not going to be on a leash, then it should have a muzzle on, but I'm assuming if he doesn't, if he has the dog loose and has a muzzle on, it's not going to be for a prolonged period of time, so it's not going to affect eating, drinking, et cetera.
Okay.
So, you're suggesting that the dog not be out loose, that the dog is always on some type of restraint, either and always under supervision when it is outside?
Yes, or, but if they want to have the dog, no matter what, it has to be under direct supervision.
Okay.
Always. But, if it's on a leash, I think that it doesn't need to have a muzzle on. If he's walking the dog, and it's walking around the yard, and he has it on a leash, then a muzzle doesn't need to be put on. But, if he's gonna choose to let his dog loose, because we don't have a leash law in Plimpton, then the dog should have a muzzle on at that point.
But, he is to still be out watching the dog while the dog is out, not on a lead?
Right.
With a muzzle on?
Correct.
I have a question. Wasn't the original incident, didn't it involve the dog on a run?
It was on a run. From what I understand from Mr. Gazola, he said that the collar wasn't, it was a not-tight-fitting collar, so I think that if he gets the correct collar, and the collar's put on correctly, then it can be properly restrained.
Collar or harness is another even better way.
Has he been agreeable to some of these changes?
He's been very compliant, I will say, throughout the whole process. He's put a muzzle on for the 14-day muzzle order, he's complied with me for everything. He also said he was coming tonight, but he didn't come tonight, so I don't know if he's being completely honest with me, but from what I've, from the experience I've had with him, he's been very compliant and open with me about wanting to restrain his dog and making sure that this doesn't happen again, but...
I have a question.
Sure.
If this dog is off of their private property, does the dog need to be leashed? I know we don't have a leash law in Plimpton.
Yes, I would say the dog needs to be on a leash. I mean, if it's, my idea, too, is I'm thinking if he's out at like, a big field in Plimpton, and he wants to let the dog run free with a muzzle on, I mean, I guess that works, but also, I think that if it's technically out in a big area like that, or it's with other, a possibility of other dogs, like Cato's Ridge, any of that, the dog should definitely have a muzzle on.
I have a question. He has nine acres of land, which are cleared in the back, so I don't know if he takes the dog out there, the things there, you know, but, you know, the things there, so.
So, if he takes his dog to Cato's Ridge, he does not have to have the dog on a leash?
If it has a muzzle on. It's one of the two, or he has a leash on regardless. I mean, I don't know, it's one of those hard things, because if he's at his house, I mean, we couldn't necessarily say, too, that if he's at his house, then the dog can go on these guidelines. If it's outside, and it's not on a leash, has to have a muzzle on, but if it's out in public, or it's out on town property, then we can say that the dog has to have a leash on at all times, put it that way.
So, we're saying that this dog, if we follow your recommendations, that at all times, Mandy has to be under the direct supervision of the owner, and either the dog be muzzle, leashed at all times, or if not leashed, muzzled. That seems reasonable to me. I mean, I thank God the injuries weren't worse, and bad enough that this happened, but the risk, of course, is that the injuries could be worse, and thank God this is a kind of a warning and an opportunity to get it right, but we certainly don't want it to happen again, so I would be fine with the recommendations, if my colleagues are. I think if we go ahead with this, we will send a certified letter to Mandy's owner, letting him know of the things we've done. I think we want to make the owner aware that were there further incidences, we would certainly be risking much more substantial action up to removal of the animal from town, so...
Can I read the recommendation again, what Griffin's recommendation was, that you just...
You can. I would probably word it a little differently in our letter, which would be to say that the Board of Selectmen will require you from here on in, that at all times, the dog be under the owner's direct supervision, and either on a leash, or if not leashed, muzzled at all times when outside.
Okay, I would feel more comfortable with that, because if we were to take them onto public property, I think the dog should definitely be muzzled, and would have to be on a leash, and, but I know we haven't been a big fan of those runs.
Yeah.
But I suppose if the dog is, if you think it's an adequate setup for the dog...
Yeah, the way it is set up right now is, the dog's basically on a runner. I mean, it's, the runner doesn't move like a full back and forth, but it can run a good distance, so.
So, the dog would be muzzled from now on on a run?
So, the dog, when the dog is outside, the dog will be muzzled, whether he's on a leash or out on a run? Is that what you said, Mark?
No, I said that either, aside from the direct supervision, the dog's either leashed or, if not leashed, has a muzzle.
Okay, okay, so if the dog is not on a leash, then the dog has to be muzzled?
Yeah.
Okay.
Which, you know, I think for...
Or, how about a leash or a restraint? So, are you saying that when the dog is on the run, without, so we're requiring the dog to be supervised when he's on the run?
Yeah.
So, when the dog is on the run, he needs to be muzzled?
Yeah.
Right, I guess that would make sense, yeah, because he's not being supervised, well, he would have...
But he's supposed to be supervised. We're ordering the dog be supervised at all time.
Then, yeah, regardless, it would have to have, I mean, it could go either way, because if it's on the run, it's technically on restraint, so we could count that as not, the dog might happen to be muzzled, but, I don't know. My thing is, is I don't want to see the dog muzzled for the rest of its life outside. I don't. And if it's in an area where it's adequate, and there's no animals by, and there's no people by, if we order him to have a muzzle on 24/7, even if there's no one around, he's still required to have a muzzle on. So, my thing is, is that if there's no one around, or he's going to be in an open area, and he wants to let his dog run free, needs to have a muzzle on. If otherwise than that, if it's going to be outside, or it's going to not have a muzzle on, then he needs to be under the direct control of Mr. Gazola, and he needs to be on a leash, restrained.
Okay. All right, so the question is, do you consider being on a run without supervision, under his direct control? Because that wouldn't require the muzzle. And maybe, you know, you can, we can try it, and you can evaluate, go back and look to see what he's got set up, he's got the dog on a harness, and that it is a satisfactory connection, so that we're not going to have a repeat of fenceiveness.
Yeah, so we can do that.
I'm okay considering a run or a lead as leashing, as a form of...
Okay, okay, as long as it's suitable.
I think as long as the collar's adequate, and everything's properly connected, then that would...
As long as it's secure, I can go with that, too.
Okay, okay.
So, if we're agreed on that, I'll compose a certified letter. Would it be all right for me to sign the letter? That'd be a certified letter. We will note that the owner has the right to appeal in district court within 10 days of issuance of the decision. The key here, for all concerned, is, God forbid there were another incident, we would be forced, no matter how we feel about things, to take much more drastic action.
Could we recommend that they pay the Quinley's vet bills, just as a recommendation?
I don't...
Or is it not really something we can do?
Can we weed into the waters of more of a civil matter?
Okay.
Between the two parties?
Had the other party been here tonight, I would have maybe mentioned...
We could have verbally said that, yeah.
It would have been a nice gesture.
Okay.
You know, beyond that, I think that becomes a legal matter, a small claims court matter, but I professionally deal with that all the time, and it's pretty frequent that, as an act of goodwill, that that's done, but I don't think we can require it, unfortunately.
Okay, all right.
All right, so I make a motion that I compose a letter describing that we have, in fact, deemed this dog to be a nuisance, and describing the actions that we're going to require be taken.
All right, I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, sorry, you guys went through that. I think we're taking appropriate measures for protection. You and your dogs deserve to feel comfortable.
This is the thing that scares me. I'm so afraid the dog's going to come over again. Right now, our dogs are old. Pearl is 12, and Twyla is 10, and even till this day, they go out the back door, and they're scared stiff now, because they think the dog's going to come after them. So, I hope he follows this, because he's not one to follow rules.
Well, I...
He's got his own rules.
Well, this will be at an enforcement order, so he, if he doesn't, there's going to be up further action.
Would you go over and check the run, and make sure that everything's there?
Yep, I'll make sure he gets a good collar on, he has a good run, and that everything's attached right, and that there's no possible way for the dog to get away.
Because, you know, because if he, he broke the run before, because the things happen, dogs can break, I've seen dogs do some strange things, so, and I don't want to see him, I'm not up to another encounter, the things there, so, the things there, but, okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Griffin.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you for coming in again.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Now, I just hope this works.
Yeah.
I assure you, we hope it works, too. We would not want to have to take further steps, because they wouldn't be nice.
If it doesn't work, we'll be back.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Any other thoughts?
I have a suggestion, maybe the bylaws should be put on, like Facebook or something for dog owners to know what the rules are type of thing, because, you know, a lot of people said, no leash law, just let run, but they don't realize the responsibility to also, maybe one like he gave dog, I said, it might be a little phrase, and say, you are responsible for your action of this dog, no matter what, type of thing.
Yeah, just as simple as, right.
It's a reasonable idea.
Right, that is.
Enjoy your night.
Thank you, thank you for coming in.
Our best to your dogs.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, boy.
Good.
Okay.
We're on for 6:30 for the assessors' tax, so why don't we move down to updates?
How about Scott?
I will.
Scott?
It wasn't earlier.
This is just a little packet of all, you don't have to read it now, or you don't have to read it all.
Thank you.
Just all the information about speed limits, the blanket speed limit, all that, and interesting things, and that's just an overview of what I've done.
Beautiful, thank you.
And I don't know what we, you always have there...
Yeah, please, Scott.
I feel like I'm going to cry. So, I know we're discussing the unified speed limit.
Yep.
It can't happen. It is only, I reached out, it says in that thing, a little outline, I reached out to a few towns that have it, and it's strictly for business areas of thickly settled towns.
So, it's dense?
It's dense, densely populated.
Yep.
Just last year, the state allowed the, any area that, if you wish to, you'd have to have a meeting, to go from 30, which was the, what's regulated, to 25 miles per hour, which you can't. I reached, the only town that actually got back to me was Braintree, and they went to 25 miles an hour for those areas, but that does not affect anything that's already been established as a speed limit. It's called a speed, I forget the exact what they call it, but it's, and in that packet as well, is all the speed reports that have been done over the years, starting in 1972, right up to 1984 was the last one that I received from OCPC. And, you know, the speed limits were set and been the same ever since then. There are a few roads in town that do not have any, like Crescent Street, for instance, there's no actual, they call it a, they call it a report of some kind, I forget the technical term for it, special speed regulation. There is nothing for, say, Ring Road, Crescent Road, things like that, but those roads...
Any idea how long you want to give me?
It shouldn't be too long, I mean, basically, a few more minutes, whatever you, whenever you want to end it.
So, the alternative you were looking at was to do a study, right? How's that?
The study came through, oh, for Main Street.
Yep.
Actually, they had it done, and the 85th percentile, which is what they go by, was 43 miles an hour. That's what the, that's actually happened to be with the radar trailers in place. I don't see how you can, I don't see how the state's going to say sure, where it's 43, where they have it at 45, and it's been 45 since 1972 or earlier.
Was it 45 there before? I thought it was 40.
Nope, it was 45. It's been 45 there. The only change, from the beginning, from the oldest report I had, the only change was that the corner was 25, and this recent evaluation made it 30, at the sharp corner. And that was a mass DOT thing, so...
So, you don't think we'd have a good case to get this over?
I don't think so. I mean, I don't know what their limit is, I mean, if that, if, you know, where you stop, it's 40, you know, it's 42, can we make it 35? Or can we, you know, it's, they have limits, and they have speeds, and that's, but yeah, and as far as the uniform speed limit, I don't think that would fly, because we don't have the, we just don't have the criteria for it. The only criteria would be the center of town here, which, that's why it's 30, and it's already set at the limit. I mean, you could drop it to 25, if, but I don't see the need to, so. And actually, in that packet, too, the very last thing was a report that was given to me. Inspector, back in 1993, was going through town, and discovered that the speed limits weren't what they were supposed to be in '93, and made all kinds of notes, and that's actually the last, very last part of the packet. And he's got all his notes on it, from these are supposed to be this, and that, and that, and this, and I don't know what happened, if they were changed, and changed back again, or nothing was ever done, or they didn't pursue it, but, so that shows inspectors do come through and check things out from time to time, so, especially where we've been making all kinds of inquiries.
Well, I really appreciate this, and I look forward to taking a look at this. I was all prepared to ask my fellow selectmen if I could spend a few minutes with town council, but you're feeling like...
You, I would, I mean, you can try, I don't know, I guess, I don't know how stringent they are in mass DOT. I mean, there are rules and laws for a reason. Maybe 43 miles an hour, you could say, well, we could drop it to 40. I don't think, I don't think it's going to go any lower than that, for that stretch of Main Street. As far as the unified speed limit, we just don't meet the criteria, we just don't have the volume for it, we don't...
I think we should attempt to get it down to 40, though.
Try what?
We should attempt to get it at least down to 40.
Would you be willing, if it were half hour, or just a few minutes with town council, just in case there's something?
Yeah.
Something more? I mean, honestly, this feels like a little bit too much states' rights and not quite enough towns' rights.
Sure.
And if anything, we're kind of on the side of safety.
Absolutely.
It makes no sense for that to be a high speed.
Whether there was some loophole in terms of historic district or anything, in any event, if you'd be willing, I'd be glad to contact Greg and just see if he thought it was worth anything at all, and if not, we'll let it be.
Yeah, to do it as a bylaw.
But really appreciate your efforts on this.
Old Colony Planning Council's been such a great thing, I... I never knew how Charlie Kilmer was, the information he can get and find for you, and the... Very, very accommodating. So, it was actually a pleasure working with him on that, so...
Great. Well, yeah, thank you so much for gathering this.
Do we need a motion on this for the legal, or what's that? Do we need a motion?
I don't think so.
No, no, we just, yeah.
Thank you, Scott.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, thanks for coming in.
You're welcome. Take care.
Yeah, it'd be nice to find if there's just some angle where even if the infraction is just a bylaw infraction and not a moving vehicle infraction, just to slow people down.
Yep. Or some form of signage, maybe...
Something. Good night!
At minimum, you know, signage about how we want our town to be something.
Right.
Alright.
Okay.
We'll keep plugging away. Okay?
I'm not sure why...
The planning board would like us... Well, that's kind of jumping ahead to correspondence.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, thank you.
I don't know if that was Griffin's or if that was...
I'm not sure.
So, I'll do a little historical update.
Okay.
I met with the... I met with the board, lived in the Historical Society, the other night, just to go sort of talk about what our view of, you know, should be done with the building, that we wanted to see it, in a sense, as a community center, being used as much as possible, that for nonprofit organizations inside Plimpton, that Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, CASA, that it shouldn't be a charge. But they should be... They, using it, should be responsible for the cleaning, so it's left the way it was when they came in. And if they wanted to have some sort of a minimum charge, just in case it wasn't, we'd leave it up to them. For events outside of... With organization outside Plimpton, I didn't... I said, "If they wanted a charge, I guess that was up to them." We haven't really discussed that, so I don't know what your views are, but I think with the building being brought up to snuff on the outside, I know in the past there have been approaches, people wanting to do weddings, and then seeing the building and, you know, backing away because it looked kind of shabby. But that's going to be kind of pristine in come springtime, so... So, I think they're okay with it. I probably talked too much, but we'll see.
So, if there was an outside event, let's say a wedding, a private event, their option on whether to charge, and then those fees go to?
The Plimpton Historical Society. It would be used to, you know, further benefit their organization and whatever they want to do.
And to pay for cleanup?
Yeah. I would assume, yeah, there'd have to be something in... So, how much it should be, I'm not sure, but I think that's... We're leaving that up to them.
And we're not charging them for the building, right?
Dollar.
They don't pay any rent, a dollar?
Yeah.
And the leases for how long?
Is that for three years?
Two years.
Two years?
Two years, I think it is. Either two or three years.
So, I mean, at worst, we get to reevaluate this whole thing in two or three years, I mean.
Yeah. I mean, the plus is, they've got a board, and that's good. It's fully staffed, except for the curator, and I think they're... They want to hold a lot of events, whether or not that's doable, I think is going to be how good the board is about pulling these things off. But at least now we have more than one person that we can go to and discuss. And if they... If we can promote the organizations to go there, the Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, Brownies, you know, I think it'd be great. Personal opinion, I'm always amazed of people who have lived in town for years and years and have never been inside that building. And I think somehow we have to make sure that happens.
And to the degree that we can support a strong historical society, and it's the very fiber of town, and we want it to go right, but we certainly want them to succeed in that.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Very good.
Yeah. So, do we have... What was the planning committee? Do we want to do that now?
Sure, we might as well.
We've got about five minutes for these.
So, the planning board has recommended appointment of Ann Soboluski to the planning board, and I believe she's getting sworn in right now.
Terrific!
If you wouldn't mind voting and signing. And that would be through May 18 of 2019.
Great.
Alright.
So moved.
Alright, I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, good until November of...
The next town election.
May of...
2019.
Yes.
Right, okay, good. Thank you, Ann.
Yeah, absolutely. Another very busy person.
Yes.
Another person who has tremendous knowledge in that area.
Oh, my gosh, she's so skilled.
Do you want me to do any other correspondence while we wait?
Might as well do it now while we're waiting.
We have a nice letter from Middleborough Fire Chief Lance Benjamino, just thanking all of us for our assistance and cooperation during his tenure as our fire management consultant. I think it was a job well done on his part.
Oh, my gosh. Absolutely.
We are all invited to the Woodlands tomorrow if we want to help serve Thanksgiving meals to the residents.
Oh, that's nice.
So, if anybody's available, the meal is being served at 1 o'clock, and I talked to Captain Schoestad, and he said if anybody's interested in helping, to please arrive around 12:30.
So, the fire department is organizing this.
The fire department is organizing this and...
Oh, how nice, that's so nice.
And running the event. They're going to be cooking everything, I believe, at the Upland Club, and doing that, and then heading over there to serve.
Oh, that's so nice.
Hope they come in here to move boxes first.
We have a notification here from KP Law regarding a pending legal matter for the Bellevue case, and it is... It includes a joint motion for remand and stay, along with a certificate of service. I don't know if anybody wants any further discussion on this, or...
Can I just read it?
Yeah, I'd like to read it, too.
Sure. Let me put that with that.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Kristen.
Alright. Probably quickly read it before we leave tonight.
We can hope that a joint motion is a good thing.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering.
And then, otherwise, there was a very nice story in the Plimpton Halifax Express about our Veterans Day celebration.
Beautiful pictures. It looks like it was well attended.
It was a great time.
Really neat. It's nice to see that, us celebrating our veterans.
Yep.
Would you like me to do my updates while we wait?
Sure.
So, I sent something to town council requesting that they send us a brief summary, just kind of go over any pending legal matters and that sort of thing. So, that should be coming at some point in the near future. Just a synopsis of any pending litigation and what the status is of those items. Along those same lines, I did also mention the marijuana moratorium and where we stand on that. And as far as that goes, we're going to see about bringing Greg Corbo and possibly Amy Kessel in, perhaps scheduling a joint appointment on our meeting agenda, maybe with a representative of the planning board, and kind of get the ball rolling with that, because we really need to do something or show the Attorney General's office that we've made some sort of progress on that. Ideally for town meeting.
Okay.
So, we need to get moving along on that.
Perfect.
I think it's 6:30. Do you want me to...
Yeah, I think we'll stop and... Have you got two more minutes, or you've got more?
I can keep going.
Talk fast!
Yeah, you've got one more minute.
Getting everything set up, too, with our IT director as far as the new fire chief is concerned. So, I think we've resolved the laptop situation. The new server is pretty much ready to go, so the fire chief will actually be the first email address on the new server.
Okay.
It should be seamless, and now we're going to be making arrangements to get everybody else switched over.
Okay. So, what have we gone to for an address?
I believe it's PlimptonTown.org.
PlimptonTown.org, okay, great. Did we straighten out the internet?
Yes.
Okay, so it's working fine?
Yes. We must have lost power.
Oh, okay.
And it was a little fussy.
Good. So, we'll... 6:30, it's the tax classification meeting with the assessors. Thank you. Thank you for coming over.
Yeah, I just have our handouts.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is that...
Is there enough?
That's for you, same thing. And that's for you.
Okay, thank you. Alright, and these are multiples of the same thing.
You have the same page, right?
Yes, I have the...
Okay. Here we go, perfect. Thank you.
So, want to just quickly take us through what you're recommending?
Do we have to actually open the hearing?
Essentially, the board of assessors does not recommend a split tax rate.
We need to vote.
You need to vote from us, right?
And ask the Board of Selectmen to vote for the same tax rate for each of the classes of property.
The notice is on the back.
Okay. So, in effect, we're saying we're going to stick with one tax rate. Is that correct? Okay.
Why don't I make a motion that we open the public hearing on tax classification at 6:30 PM that's held in the selectman's meeting room?
Second.
And I'll just read the whole thing. "The open meeting hearing will focus on the local property tax burden among the five property classes, residential, open space, commercial, industrial, and personal property for fiscal year 2019. The public hearing requires a vote by the Board of Selectmen for allocation of property tax classification. The local policy decision regarding any shift of property tax burden from one class to another is made exclusively by the Board of Selectmen. The hearing will give taxpayers an opportunity to present their views as to whether residential, open space, commercial, industrial, and personal property should be taxed at the same or different rates. The Board of Assessors will provide supporting data relevant to the fiscal effects of available alternatives. Selectmen will also be required to vote on the small, commercial, business exemption. Such an option, if voted, would reduce the property taxes on properties occupied by small businesses and shift those taxes onto commercial and industrial properties. After the hearing, the Board of Assessors will submit the recap sheet to the Massachusetts Department of Revenue for approval of the tax rate for the fiscal year 2019."
Second.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, we're open. I was surprised that 27% of the town is the commercial industrial.
Yeah, I think I know which section we're applying to. So, that's an increase of 20, well, over 25 to 26% of the previous year.
Really?
Really. On the commercial side.
Did we add some, or is it just the fact that they're valued at more?
There was significant commercial sales, two of them, in particular, the storage unit on Town Road, so the pre-living and the service station, Plimpton Gas Station and Communities. They did a commercial condo at the service station, and then sold off the Communities and the gas station for just almost $1.5 million.
Okay. That should help us.
What would the commercial number need to be at where it would trigger us to look at a split rate? Isn't there normally a number that you kind of try to get to?
The two communities near us that do split rate are Bellevue and... And really, the focus is on, well, both commercial, they have a much larger commercial base, but more the percentage that you get on the residential side. So, they're at a high 70% residential right now.
Okay.
We're at 71, 72%.
Okay.
So, you know, we have to look at it if we creeped up a little bit.
Thank you.
Yeah. We do want to, to the extent we can, attract more commercial, so...
Absolutely.
I don't believe we should split the rate.
Oh, I don't either.
No.
I don't either.
Not you, okay?
I'm okay. Do we hear anyone in the audience that wants to speak in favor?
Anyone like to testify? Anything to say?
Anyone have anything to say to people who currently... Who are speaking now?
So, we make a motion that we can...
Accept the residential factor.
Is that the way it should be worded?
Yeah, or are you just going to read the...
A motion to accept residential, commercial, industrial, personal property at single rate with a resident, with a factor.
Okay. Also move that?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, that's...
Is there anything else you need from us?
You need to sign.
To sign?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, good, okay.
Perfect.
Here, you can... There's that. That goes...
So, what is... What do you have? Are you looking for that, too?
Yeah.
Okay.
You gave her mine.
You can have mine. I have it in line.
Thank you.
Did this come back my line?
That was a copy.
She has an original to be signed.
Okay, then I can go that way.
And you'll submit this tomorrow, tonight? Okay.
Things going well over there?
Yeah.
Yeah? Good. Good. I appreciate the notes you send out.
It's great to get those updates.
Yeah.
Very good. Alright, well, we signed.
Feels like everybody's working together.
Yes.
Thank you. So, do we need to close the hearing?
Wendy made...
I would.
Good, I appreciate the notes you send out.
It's great to get those updates.
Yeah.
Very good, all right, well, we signed.
Feels like everybody's working together.
Yes.
Thank you. So, do we need to close the hearing?
Wendy made.
I would.
All right, I'll make a motion that we close the tax classification hearing.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Enjoy your evening.
Thank you!
Good night, now, happy Thanksgiving.
Liz, you have more updates for us?
So, we're working on the Green Communities' improvements to all the buildings.
Yeah, that's getting a lot of good feedback.
Yeah, it is. Everybody seems happy so far, and some of the people who run the different buildings, like Peter Venito at the Denne School, and Debbie Batson at the library, have been fantastic as far as coordinating their schedules and making sure that the people can get in there to do the work that they need to do. So, so far, so good, we're moving right along. We received our first disbursement of the grant funding. Now, we're just waiting to be invoiced.
Very good.
That it?
I think so.
Okay.
Good. Run down the goals for me, quickly, economic development. I was surprised to hear how much the evaluations had gone up on those two properties that were sold, which is, I guess, a good sign for the economy. Anything else on that? Financial management, you sent us around the letter for the budget.
Yes.
I didn't have any problem.
Looked good?
Good.
Yeah, I'd say go ahead.
Okay.
Great. Public safety?
Continue to make progress, little hiccups here and there, but moving forward. Wonderful words being said by many different places about our contractor doing a really good job.
Yeah. You know, I've had nobody with a negative comment. I was wondering, as the building went up, would some people, you know, sort of, oh, we don't need that? But I haven't heard a thing.
Yep.
No, I think people are on board. Grants. I have a thought, I don't know if it's, it's not really a proposal. So, this is this little town out where my son is building a house, Monterey, Cali. In the winter, it's 900 and some odd people, in the summer, it's about 2,500. And they have a grant writer, they actually hired a grant writer.
Wow.
And the grant writer, over the last three years, has brought in over $5 million in grants. And they publish a little newsletter, if you will, I think it comes under the auspices of the library, and everybody, anybody who wants to write can write a column and they put it in. And so, he wrote a column and saying, you know, broke it down, where it all came from. It just seemed to me, we, maybe that's something we should think about pursuing? Whether or not it would make sense? I just feel like there's lots of monies out there, but we don't know where the buckets are, and we don't really know yet how to kind of go after them. So, it's something I'd like to put on future agenda, maybe to talk, and I'd like Elise to come in and chat with us about that. See if we can brainstorm somehow. Got to get more money in, I know that. Expenses are going up.
So, should we get her on the agenda, maybe in January?
I would like to see that, yeah.
That would be good.
Yeah.
Maybe get a little perspective from her, too, as to like how many hours she thinks a position like that, if so created, what would that take?
Yeah.
Would it be more of like a stipend position as opposed to an actual employee, per se?
I don't know what that person makes, but $5 million versus whatever they're paying them, that's a, that's a big payoff, so, you know, we'd have to figure out some sort of, if we pay you this, then we expect blank, whatever that is. But it should be a big number, or it doesn't make sense.
I could put some feelers out to the other communities and just see...
That'd be great.
Who else has somebody in a role like that, and how are they paid?
Yeah.
Because it's been ages since I've worked somewhere where they've had people like that. The city that I worked for a while ago, they had a couple different grant writers on the staff. And they were always helpful with, especially with big applications, like to Mass Works and stuff. But I'd be interested to see what smaller towns have.
Right.
Yeah, even a sharing type situation, yeah.
Even a job share type situation, maybe with another community.
Right, right.
Just seems to make perfect sense. I don't know what Halifax does, so that'd be interesting.
Okay.
Yeah.
I can find that out.
Thanks, Liz. Voluntarism, boy, it feels like things are going forward. I mean, the Veterans Day, there must have been, what, 100 people there? Anyways?
Yeah.
Yeah. The Thanksgiving dinner over at the, at the school.
The Denne, yeah.
Just phenomenal, as usual.
I heard it was really good, yeah.
You know, you just look around, Vet, the Plimpton Historical Society getting organized, moving forward, got a lot of energy there, so, feels like things are going.
Good.
Yeah. Technology, I guess...
Moving forward.
Yeah.
It's right here, sir.
I wonder where I lost them. Thank you. Old age.
Why don't you take a copy of the report, too? We have access.
Oh, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you!
Thank you, Mr. Quinley. Okay, any other business before we go on Days to Remember?
Maybe I'll just mention, it isn't on the agenda, but I'll be sending out a letter then a week or so. CPC had received two new applications for potential forwarding to town meeting. One of them for another open space pre-acquisition fund, which has been so successful in the past. And then one to help fund handicap access child safe improvement to the playground at the Denne. So, next week, as part of the CPC application process, I send out a letter requesting input from boards, commissions, committees, and we'll do so, that'll include this, and we'll put it on the agenda and can talk about it and see what we think about it.
So, the one, the playground one is coming from the school committee?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the first one was, again, what?
Pre, open spaces applying for another pre-acquisition fund as they have in the past. The $30,000 that was used for surveys and appraisals.
Oh, yes, okay, okay.
Legal fees and all that, which along the way has given us the O'Neill Marsh, has given us the Two Brookes Preserve.
Yeah, yeah. Great.
So, that's only to say that letter will be coming, and it'll come on the agenda, and we can talk about it.
Great, okay. Days to Remember. Board of Selectmen Open Meeting, 6:00 PM on 12-3, December 3rd, and December 17th.
On December 3rd at 7:00, we're heading over to Middleborough.
Perfect.
Yeah. Have you found anything as far as...
What kind of fund?
To talk with them and thank them for allowing us the use of Chief Benjamino's services.
Have you found any plaque or anything?
Yep, we ordered it today.
Nice!
It's got their names on it, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And we're going to be getting approved soon, right?
Yes.
Very nice.
Oh, good, okay.
Great.
You are having a regular meeting before you go.
A quick one.
Yes.
Yeah.
And depending on the length of the agenda for next time, I think we should leave it open-ended if we may need to start at 5:30.
Yeah.
Instead of 6:00. And we'll let you know, and also Area 58.
Yeah. Makes perfect sense.
Post here, and they have to post from Middleborough.
Yes.
Okay. November 22nd, Town House offices closed for Thanksgiving, as you would expect. Best holiday of the year.
Absolutely.
It's going to make me tired.
Minutes?
The turkey, just got the...
I don't think we have minutes.
No, okay.
We don't, thank you.
Selectmen's rants and raves?
Can I ask, before I do my rant and rave, is possibly us, we had kind of talked about developing a policy for town-owned land, maybe actually doing it similar to what we did for the open space, I think, or the other, what was the other land that we were looking at? Was it donated land where we developed the policy? I can't even remember what it was for, but it was where everybody looked at it to determine the viability to the, you know, a different town boards keeping it?
I don't know if I was around.
What the heck was it? It was...
I, I'm blocking, I'm not fully understanding.
We did, we developed a policy where, and I can't remember what it was for, but it was for a particular segment of property that, before it was disposed of, but it wasn't tax title.
We did receive some correspondence.
It was a right of first refusal, that's what it was. It was a right of first refusal policy.
We did receive...
Thank you.
Correspondents from the open space committee asking that when we take a look at town-owned land that might come up for sale, that they and Concom and others being consulted, out of that, Liz and I talked about potentially her drafting a procedure. What we have, what we got from Town Treasurer is the procedure for her.
For her.
Once we've decided.
Right.
What we haven't done is putting together that, how we decide what land we might put up for sale.
I could put together a draft, maybe for our next meeting to go over.
That would be awesome.
And people can let me know what edits and that kind of thing. I think it's always easier to go once you have something on paper.
I think that would be great.
Love it.
I think it should be on the agenda. I will say that I think when we get to that point, I will recuse myself, potentially go to the audience.
Okay.
I have some strong thoughts as a citizen, but because some of the, a fair amount of the land that we're talking about abuts my property, I think probably I should recuse myself.
Okay.
I think we definitely need that piece.
I agree.
When we combine that document with the treasurer's document, then we will have a procedure all the way through, not unlike Chapter 61, right of first refusal.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, and if we don't have time on the 3rd, maybe the 17th, but yeah, I would definitely love for us to get that squared away. Perfect.
I thank you, Liz volunteered to do that, and we're appreciative.
Certainly. Okay, that was it.
Okay, were you going to go on to raves?
Sure, I can go on raves, and my rave would be coming full circle with the fire department. Such an exciting time, it's just, there's so many really good things going on in the town right now, and it's fun to be a part of it. And just with the Two Brokes Preserve, and the police station, and now the fire department, and every, all the other great things happening in town, it really is a fun time to be a citizen of this town. A lot of positive change happening, and it's, it's very exciting. And I feel like people are energized, and I know I'm energized, and it's just, it's fun to be part of it. It really is, I think we're, we're moving in the right direction, and it's, it's great. It just feels like things are coming together.
Yeah. Mac?
I, I didos, total didos on that, I totally echo that. Mine, though, I think maybe was the Denne Thanksgiving banquet, and just a really sweet thing. Sweet songs sung, but particularly some really kind of fundamental values that are still obviously being inculcated in those kids. And our tax dollars are being really well spent on that school system.
Yeah.
And, yeah, so nice to be part of that.
You know, I was sitting there, looking up, it's my third one now, and it just, they seem to have figured out how to get the kids, I love it when they, what they do, they raise their hand to something, and all the kids put up their hand, and they all go quiet, you know? And the way that they all seem to work together. And then we have Casa, who was doing the serving.
The serving.
And I guess, as I understand it, people were cooking turkeys at their home and bringing them in?
They do, they bring them in.
Yeah.
You cook it all.
Just great. So, kudos to all the people who worked on that. Veterans Day, I thought, went off very well. You know, kudos to Joy Mabel and her people for putting that together. It was fun, it was just fun to be there. So, I agree with you, we got a lot going on, it just feels good in town right now.
Debbie has another event in December at the Upper Quell.
Yes.
Oh, the, is that the breakfast or the dinner?
Is that the roast beef? Because that's what's usually in December. So, we'll have to ask Joy about that, so 13th.
Christmas dinner.
The Christmas dinner?
There is a, on the 13th, Wendy has asked somebody, one of us, to go to the Cisco.
Oh, I saw that, yeah.
So, I'll go if...
I'm glad to go, if you don't want to go. If you want to go, you should go.
I wish I could go!
So, we have a should, and a would, and a could.
I want a roast beef dinner, quite frankly.
Oh, goodness!
But, well, okay, we'll figure it out.
I'll leave it to you, do it if you want, absolutely, but, yeah.
Great, so, there'll be no further business, I'll make a motion that we close the Monday meeting.
So moved, happy Thanksgiving!
Yeah, all those in favor?
Aye!